For January 19th, 2016. I call this meeting to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Ehrens.
Here.
Cammerer.
Here.
Carbonaro. Dany.
Here.
Hopkins.
Here.
Ranky.
Here.
President Wallace.
Here. Requested that Rosemary Traynor from Jesus Journey Church give us our invocation this morning. Pastor Traynor.
Father, I just pray over our president, trustees, and all our elected officials, a blessing upon them and their families. I ask for your hand of protection upon them. I ask for your wisdom to lead and guide them in all the decisions they make regarding the town of Bartlett. And I ask, Lord, that you'd bless this town, that each of our trustees, president, would edify and build this town up, and all the people who live here. I pray that the decisions made would cause this town to grow and become prosperous. And I pray for your wisdom as to how our finances are to be used, that those involved in how they are used and money dispersed do so with your wisdom. I thank you that all of our elected officials are men and women of integrity, and all of their decisions made are for the betterment of the town and its people. I thank you for Bartlett, that this is a town that is growing and is prosperous because it is a town that is blessed of you, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Traynor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The consent agenda this evening, as you can see on the agenda, I have listed with an asterisk, will be acted in one motion, there'll be no further discussion on any items that are on the consent agenda. At this point, is there anything the board would like to add to the consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. President, I would like to add E1, the Weapons Ordinance Code Amendment, which puts us in compliance, in agreement with the state law, so there's really no further discussion.
E1.
E1.
That's fine.
That being said, I'll entertain a motion to amend the consent agenda to include the minutes from the board and committee meeting from January 5th, 2016, the bills list from January 19th, 2016, understanding committee reports of the consent agenda will be a planning and zoning committee, Bartlett Point West Special Service Area, and adding, under Police and Health Committee, the Weapons Ordinance Code Amendment.
So moved.
Second. Moved by trustee Dany, seconded by trustee Carbonaro. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Carbonaro.
Yes.
Dany.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Ranky.
Yes.
Ehrens.
Yes.
Yes.
That motion carries. I'll entertain a motion to approve the amended consent agenda.
Second.
Moved by trustee Ehrens, seconded by trustee Dany. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Dany.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Ranky.
Yes.
Ehrens.
Yes.
Cammerer.
Yes.
Carbonaro.
Yes.
That motion carries. Next item on our agenda this evening is the treasures report. Jeff?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll start out this evening with the sales tax report for the fiscal year ended September Fiscal year-to-date revenue is $970,597, is an 8.44 percent increase over the same time period last year. MFT, we will have a report next month as the distribution for MFT came in after the board packets were distributed.
Anybody have any questions regarding the treasures report for Mr. Martin Noix? Thank you, Jeff. Next item we have this evening is the president's report. In your package, you'll see a member had approached us in regards to becoming a plan commission member. His name is Jack Allen. He's been a longstanding resident of Bartlett. And I will entertain a motion for the board to consent for his appointment.
So moved.
Second.
It's moved by trustee Cammerer, seconded by trustee Dany. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Hopkins.
Yes.
Ranky.
Yes.
Ehrens.
Yes.
Cammerer.
Yes.
Carbonaro.
Yes.
Dany.
I'm voting yes, but I just want to make one comment. I've known Mr. Allen for some time, and I sure hope I live not to regret this. Yes.
I don't think Jack could make it this evening. I don't see him here, but for the record, we thank him for his service. He's been a longtime member of the Bartlett area, and I know he's got a lot of family here, so we welcome him aboard and thank him for moving into that service position. Moving along, questions and answers. Board have any questions at this point? Hearing done, we'll move into the town hall portion of the meeting. This is the portion of the meeting, if you'd like to address the board, please step up to the podium. Kindly keep your comments two, three minutes or under. Would anybody like to address the board at this time?
My name is Janet Nup, and I've lived on Sayre Road for 30 years. Twenty-four of those years, my property bordered the property that's being discussed tonight. My major concern with that property is that the houses are too small and the lots are too small in keeping with the rest of the area. And I'm going to pass these around, and I want you to take a look at these. These are the three houses that would be right next to this property. There's absolutely no transition. These are 3,500-plus square foot houses, custom-built. These are the houses that would be next door to them, literally half the size of those existing houses. Here's what it looks like, the existing houses. These two houses would literally have six houses bordering their two lots. I think that's excessive. This piece of property is absolutely pristine, mature oaks, probably the most beautiful piece of property in the Bartlett area. This is what it looks like. All those trees will be cut down. Two-hundred-year-old oaks, and it would be obliterated to fit all the houses in. One of the things Polte said is that in other developments that they build, they transition from smaller houses to bigger houses in their developments. They have absolutely no plan to do this here in Bartlett. Here's three of their developments. I'll pass this around. The houses range from 2,300 square feet to 3,300. The Bartlett houses would be 1,600 to 2,500, substantially smaller with no buffer. Again, this is what the houses would look like next to all the beautiful custom-built houses. This property has been zoned SR1, it should stay SR1. This is not appropriate for the property. I pulled records on average price per square foot for houses selling in Bartlett for the last 90 days. You can see Schaumburg, Hoffman, St. Charles, Roselle, all substantially above us on a sale per square foot. The only villages below us are Greenwood and Hanover Park. And if you think of those suburbs, the ones above are more similar to Bartlett, the ones below are full of lots of small houses on small lots. And so my major concern here is this development may be appropriate for Bartlett, but it's not appropriate for this piece of property. I think it's going to dramatically have a very negative effect on all of the homeowners around there. Every homeowner is a custom-built home, and you're going to put tiny little tract housing right next door to it.
Did you have some information for us, yeah?
Here's the pictures, and here's...
Thank you for coming out tonight.
Good evening. I'm Matt Nup. I'm Janet's husband. As she said, we're 30-year residents of Sayre Road, and just want to take a few minutes to talk about the proposed Sunset Hill that the committee of the whole will be hearing tonight. As Janet said, we're 30-year residents on Sayre Road. We are unincorporated DuPage County. But over those 30 years, we've worked very closely as residents. We feel like we're part of Bartlett, although we pay taxes here. But we've worked with a various number of village boards that have sat in your seats to develop Naperville-Sayre Road, the road that nobody knows what it is, what your address is. Is it Sayre or is it Naperville? Now, is it Munger? We don't know. But just to give you a little history of what we've done with the village board over the past 30 years, somewhere around 1988, Campanelli purchased the property at the corner of Sterns and Sayre Road. That was open, rolling meadows and hills. That was then rezoned and developed as SR2 as part of a PUD with a minimum of 10,800 square foot lots. Wasn't what we really wanted as residents of the road, but it was acceptable to us at that time for that property. I would tell you, though, the thing that swayed me personally was is that that property is self-contained and has a major buffer on the north, which is the Commonwealth Edison easement that separates it from the rest of Sayre-Naperville Road. Somewhere around 1990, Preserve Trail, which is, I think, about 17 homes, was annexed to the village, and that was zoned as ER3 as a part of a PUD with 20,000 square foot minimum lots. 1995, roughly, Sundance Homes came to the village and extended Auburn Lane out to Route 59 and developed a parcel off of Sayre-Naperville Road on both sides of the road, and that was zoned ER3 as part of a PUD for 20,000 square foot lots. Somewhere around 1998, Litchfield Woods was developed. Litchfield Woods is what currently would abut exactly where the Polte development is. They're going to extend the road, and Litchfield Woods was developed as an ER3 PUD, 20,000 square feet. So there's a history here of how this road develops. There's a history here of how we've worked with the village board, and hoping that you're going to listen to us tonight, here are concerns. One last section, there is a private road. I don't know who the developer was, but there's about five lots, and that was also zoned ER3 as part of a PUD with 20,000 square foot lots. So from Sterns Road to Munger, you have a minimum of 10,800 square foot, with the majority being 20,000 square foot or more, and you also have several of us in the unincorporated area that are on anywhere from one to five acre lots. There's no buffer, there's no transition for this development. It's going to be a, to me, it's a shocking transition. You're going to go from black to white. As my wife mentioned, other developments that they have, maybe not all of them, but they themselves, I think, have recognized the need for transition in their developments. I think you're going to hear from Polte tonight that the current market conditions are for a smaller home, for empty nesters. And that's fine. It may be real, it may be perceived, I don't know, but my opinion is market conditions should not dictate zoning. When we start doing that, we lose the integrity that the town is and the character that we have. I have no fault with the Litchfields' right to sell the property, Polte's right to develop the property, but it has to be done right. I'm pro-development. I've worked somewhat in the development business, but it has to be done and done properly. When I do a project and my name goes on it, I'm very proud of it and have nothing to hide, and I work with my neighbors. I do want to let you know that in 2008, 2009, and through transparency, my property, which was unincorporated DuPage County, was zoned R1 with a minimum of, or excuse me, R2, which a minimum, R1, minimum of 100,000 square foot lot. I went to DuPage County and I rezoned and subdivided my property to R2, which is a minimum 40,000 square foot lot, and built another home on the front of it. The point I want to make here, though, is that when I went through that rezoning with DuPage County, the village of Bartlett objected to my rezoning of that property to DuPage County. I was proposing 40,000 square feet, which is five times larger than what Polte is proposing, and I was objected to. I took that very personally, I didn't understand it. I was successful and rezoned it, but I would ask the board to take that same perspective, perhaps, with Polte as they come forward to you. Currently, this property, and there's two parcels. There's an option, which is zoned R4 with Cook County, which is minimum 20,000 square foot lots if it has sewer, 40,000 square feet if it's septic. The DuPage portion, which is this parcel down here, is zoned R1, which is 100,000 square feet. And the two parcels are night and day, if you're familiar with them. This is open pasture, rolling hills. There's quite a significant elevation change across the property. And then the DuPage portion is heavily wooded with mature oaks and hickories. And as Polte told us at the meeting that they had with the residents last week, the majority of those trees are going to be gone, the number of houses they need in there. I believe Bartlett has a tree preservation or replacement ordinance, but you can't replace hundreds of century-old oaks and hickories. I got to ask at that meeting how they were going to deal with the glades, because when Campanelli came in, it was similar to this property in rolling, and they came in and flattened the property. So whatever happens when it gets to engineering, we need to work to preserve the terrain of these properties. So I guess just, you know, in closing, 30 years of working with the board, I appreciate the cooperation, want to continue it. I want you to hear my concerns, hopefully my neighbors' concerns. We're not against Polte, we're not against the village, we're not against development, but this is the wrong use for that property today. So, thank you. I look forward to working with everyone.
Thank you for comments, Matt.
Hi, I'd like to address the same topic, just to give my agreement with my neighbors over here, and just to urge you not to rezone this property.
Ma'am, could you give us your name and address, please?
Yes, my name is Jennifer Leela, and I live in the Hidden Oaks of Litchfield. 635 Hamilton Court. We moved here two years ago. We paid a premium to live in this zone, and I do feel that this type of development at the end of our road would decrease the value, and it would also increase traffic through our fairly hidden, and it feels like a good rural neighborhood. I just don't want that to change. And I also noticed that they're not only asking to rezone, but they're also asking for an exemption on the impervious cover. Like, one of their models would require over 52 percent impervious cover for a lot. Just as an environmental professional, I don't think that's a good steward of the environment. I just don't think it's going to look good. I don't think it follows best management practices. So I would just urge you to consider denying that exception as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Leela. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Patrick Hartle, and I also live in Hamilton Court in the Hidden Oaks subdivision. Of the 60 homeowners that are part of that homeowners' association, we're all very concerned about this Polte subdivision. Opening up Litchfield Lane, for one, would increase a tremendous amount of traffic onto Litchfield Lane. We all, as Jennifer said, we all paid a premium for our homes, and you're looking at homes that have a valuation of between $500,000 and $800,000, and they're going to be selling homes for $250,000 to $350,000. So, again, there's no buffer, there's going to be incredible amount of traffic and other issues that come with that. So, again, we ask you to make this a serious decision and, you know, not rezone this.
Thank you, Patrick.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Chris Roberts, I live at 148 Jody Lane. I've been in Bartlett for roughly about 10 years now. I'm basically 200 feet from this proposed development. Years ago, I was in construction in Virginia, as a residential construction foreman. Our homes in this area are on well and septic. Our water quality is already pitiful as it is. We're drawing up enough iron, we can go ahead and make a foundry with it. I've got three filtering systems, and it's not enough. My concern is when this construction project, if it were to go through the way it's planned or modified, how it's going to affect that water table. Because they're going to be on city water. They're not going to tap wells for each one of those homes. It wouldn't be prudent. Our water quality would diminish greatly, either by runoff and silt, not to mention the fact, as our environmentalists, we've seen, we've also got coyote problems, whether it is. When we start forcing these things into our homes, into our subdivisions deeper and deeper, away from that construction, what about the safety of our children or our animals? Think about that.
Thank you for stepping in.
Hello, my name is Judy Langroy. I live on Sayre Road in the same subdivision as my neighbors here. My husband and I have been on Alder, I'm sorry, on Alder. We've lived here for the past eight years. Whenever I have company, my guests will always remark, "What a beautiful area." I have had deer in the backyard. It is a beautiful area. And people say, "I didn't know it was back here. It's so lovely." Well, it's lovely, but we did pay a premium price for our home, and we continue to pay very high taxes. I mean, $16,000 a year. It's not cheap, and I would hate to see the property cheapened by little tiny houses. When my husband and I started out, we worked all our lives, and now we were able to buy this house on a beautiful lot. We'd like to see it stay that way. I feel sorry for people who don't have as much as we do, and they have to have a smaller home, but there are other places where smaller lots are more conducive to the area. I just wanted to let you know how I feel. Thank you.
Thank you for coming out.
May I get your address?
Ma'am? Ma'am?
Your address?
1161 Alder Lane.
Anyone else? Time's almost up. Just teasing.
My name is John Moose. I've lived in Bartlett for close to 10 years, in the Hidden Oaks Division. I live at 1143 Litchfield Lane. Second to everything that has been said here, I think everyone's been eloquent in their concerns. The, one thing I might add is, I don't believe the village of Bartlett benefits from, not necessarily the increase in the tax base, but the, there should be some buffer between the two developments. There should be a disconnect of the road. I would suggest, at the very least, putting a buffer in here, at the very least, not connecting these two roads. The discount that you get off the tax base in putting such a development in on Hidden Oaks is only going to go to Polte in the form of higher house prices in their development. There's no extra tax base incentive for Bartlett to keep the connection between these two divisions. Thank you.
Thank you for comments. Anyone else like to make a comment at this point? Hearing done, we'll move on. Standing committee reports. This evening, our first standing committee report is Planning and Zoning Committee, Chairman Ranky.
Thank you, Mr. President. The only item was taken care of on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Chairman Ranky. Next standing committee report to have this evening is under the Building Committee, Chairman Hopkins.
Thank you, President Wallace. There's nothing to report tonight.
Thank you, Chairman Hopkins. Next, the Standing Committee reports this evening, under Finance and Golf Committee, Chairman Dany.
Mr. President, nothing to report this evening.
Thank you, Chairman Dany. Next standing committee report is License and Ordinance Committee, Chairman Ehrens.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing to report this evening.
Thank you, Chairman Ehrens. Next item we have under Standing Committee Reports is the Police and Health Committee, Chairman Carbonaro.
Thank you, Mr. President. The only item we had was included on the consent agenda, nothing else to report.
Thank you, Chairman Carbonaro. Finally, outstanding committee reports is the Public Works Committee, Chairman Cammerer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, we have a ordinance on the natural gas franchise that was negotiated with the consortium, and I think what I can do is maybe turn this over to staff to explain this and to give a little more detail of you.
Yes, this was negotiated with a group of other municipalities from the northwest, or the DuPage barren managers. We are proposing that the board consider this 25-year franchise agreement. The new agreement would allow us to take a payment instead of free terms, because we were never using up all of our free terms. And so this will allow us to get cash. We will come out ahead on that, and I'd ask Dan to add, who attended most of the meetings, to have any other comments.
As Valerie stated, the new option is being able to take the annual payment versus the free terms, and I, based on our use, I looked at it, and we're only using about half, so it makes sense to look at the annual payment. So the consortium did a good job of working it through with Nycor, and it was a long process, but I think the end result is positive.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions by the board? If not, then I would move the passage of ordinance 216-05, an ordinance authorizing and granting a franchise to the Norton Illinois Gas Company, doing business as Nycor Gas Company, its successors and assigns to construct, operate, and maintain a natural gas distributing system in and through the village of Bartlett, Illinois.
Move by trustee Cammerer, seconded by trustee Ehrens. Is there any discussion? Did you see any downside to this, Dan? What were the, I don't understand where we could go wrong with this, but I might be missing something.
I don't see a downside. We've always had the franchise agreement, so it's kind of a renewal. We were able to get some extra things out of it, and I think we benefit for that.
I couldn't either. Any other questions at all?
What does the one-time renewal payment equate to?
It's in the range of like $40,000. So we will get much more than what we put in. I think we put in roughly $8,000 over the years, and we're going to make much more than that with this annual, or this one-time renewal fee.
Anyone else? Hearing done, other clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Ranky.
Yes.
Ehrens.
Yes.
Cammerer.
Yes.
Carbonaro.
Yes.
Dany.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
That motion carries.
That's all we have under Public Works this evening.
Thank you, Chairman Cammerer. Next item we have this evening under, on the agenda is new business. Is there anyone who has new business that we'd like to address? Hearing done, we'll move on to questions and answers. Anybody have any questions for the board? I think I would mind asking a question I don't know the answer to, but just to clarify, I had some comments from residents regarding our first snow this year, and it's the first time in 20-some years of being in the village where they said, "You know, what happened?" And I think Dan said that there was a water main break at the same time as that first snow.
If you're talking about the ice storm that we had in that July, that was a nightmare. It started out, as everyone knows, it was ice that they kept saying was going to convert to, change over to rain, and never really did that. The ice just kept building up, so our crews were out busy trying to use salt. The salt wasn't doing it fast enough because the ice was coming down faster than the salt would work. So then we ended up plowing it, but in the middle of all that, through a water main break that was flooding out an area that was getting up close to some of our neighbors' doorways, we had to take some of our guys off of that to deal with the water main break. So it just kind of slowed the whole process down, so it was a rough night.
Okay. How are we doing for salt? I imagine pretty good, right?
Actually, we're doing really well, knock on wood.
Anything for next year.
Have we ever had any request for a warming center, or does anybody ever?
I'm sorry, for a what?
Display a need for a warming center.
You know, we always open up the police department area for a warming center anytime the temperature gets below 25, chief.
No, it has to be a little colder than that, but we've opened it up for about five days so far this year, so, yeah. We open up the police department training room, and we bring in refreshments and coffee and seating areas, and we turn the TVs on and stuff. And it's not very rarely utilized, but when it is, it's open.
Good. Anything else? Anything else? We'll be moving directly into the committee of the whole meeting. With that being said, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Seconded.
Moved by Trustee Aaron, seconded by Trustee Carbonaro. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Aaron's?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Daney?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.